Okay, so it's five o'clock, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if everybody can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands alone, nation to God in his will, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks for coming, everyone. Dr. Crandall is joining us via telepresence, taking advantage of it because of the inclement weather. Deb is not here tonight because of the inclement weather, so here we go. So hopefully she'll shut down. Yeah, well, she's actually out. She's actually out. So, yeah. So the first thing we need to do is to approve the meeting agenda.
Diana, six point two, please.
Six point two.
So it's highlight.
Yep, okay.
And then I just have a question, not because I really want to discuss it, but seven point five, I just, we don't really discuss it, and I want to say thank you to that person for their service.
Okay.
I don't know if we can take it off to say, or if I could just have said that now, but it feels important to say out loud to me.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we need to add six point two to the agenda, so then I need a motion to add six point two to the agenda.
I make motion to add six point two to the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, five point zero is community comments. Community comments is an opportunity for the public to address the school board on a school-related item in accordance with the guidelines that are printed at the end of the agenda. The agendas can be found on the table over there. And we don't have any community comments. So I'm just going to move right on to six point zero. Student highlights, Alpine Ski Team, so six point one, Alpine Ski Team.
Okay, so our Alpine Ski Team competed at the section meet this week and did a fantastic job. They've been in constant contact with Coach Charles Lamb throughout the season, and he always gives me the highlights, and he's super excited. Riley Wallers was the runner-up on the girl's side, so she came in second and had two great runs. Cela Backstrom, 12th, did a great job. So both of them as individuals will advance to the state meet, which is next Wednesday. Will Serban is our boy qualifier. He finished 16th, and he finished 16th and qualified for state with a miss gate, right?
He hiked, it was amazing.
Yeah, so he hiked back up, got around the gate, and he still...
It was impressive.
He's still qualified. I mean, it's one thing to do that in like a meet with two or three teams or something like that, it's a whole nother thing to do at a section meet. Pretty impressive. The girls took second, and so the girls as a team will advance to the state meet.
So is, what's the criteria for qualifying? Is it like getting a certain place at the sectional? Or is it a certain time that you...
Generally, top 15 for the boys and for the girls. And then, correct me if I'm missing this, but then they also look at the other sections and they'll see some time. And you know, if we have somebody who came in, say, faster than some of their kids who plays 12th or 13th, and then sometimes that 16th or 17th kid gets in. But generally, it's top 15.
Yeah, and it impacts the team too. So because the, and it's only the top two teams that finish in the section that get to go to state. And so if you've got a lot of people that finish in the top 10, you know, top 10, top 15, then more kids go. And so that's why Will, in 16th place, actually got to go is because there was a bunch of boys from the, actually Stillwater took first place in Boys and Girls, and so they had a bunch of Stillwater finishers. And so that's how we got it. So, yeah, so it was exciting. Obviously, my daughter's on the team, so it was, we were very surprised. Obviously, we were, you know, had to fingers crossed, but it was great to have them make it. We were all surprised, they were surprised, and we were surprised. And so are you going to say their names?
Go ahead.
It's Riley Wallers, Cela Backstrom, El Salandi, Hallie Lamb, Kalina Dimitrova.
I didn't want to say that one, that's why I said go ahead.
And our foreign exchange student, Anna Saxauer, from Germany. She's great, she's having a great time. She, this is a great experience for her. She, the girl, she's the sweetest girl, she's all smiles all the time. And so, yeah, so it's going to be really exciting this week.
We did, we didn't anticipate this weather, but I wanted them to come in. Charles is like, now before the state thing, we're all going to be in practice. He promised that, you know, the next board meeting in March, we'll have the girls come in. That's the two highlights, because we kind of wanted to have them recognized right through.
Yeah.
Yeah, awesome.
Thank you. Six point two.
All right, so every year, actually, I think it's for the last three years, if I read right, Minnesota State High School League has something called the Excel Award. And Excel stands for Excellence in Community Education and Leadership. It's a unique recognition program designed exclusively for Minnesota high school juniors who are active school activities, who show leadership qualities, and who are voluntarily in their community. So every member of the school of the league is invited to nominate one girl and one boy for the Excel Award. And the nominees, once again, they must be a junior, make satisfactory progress towards graduation, participate in a Minnesota State High School League Fine Arts or athletic activity, hold a leadership position in the school, and award voluntarily in the community. So Cook County put some, two students forward, and we are proud to have a winner of this award for 2019, Adam Door.
Oh, great.
Recipient of the Minnesota State High School League Excel Award. Just, actually, just got posted this morning. And so he will be recognized at what event, Mitch? Do they recognize the Excel?
I think the state girls' basketball tournament, they bring the 18 kids in the state that get recognized, and put them on the floor and give them an award.
That's out of around 200 kids that are... So he was selected out of that, they're top 18 kids, you know, so nine girls. Is it, did they divide it up, nine girls and boys, or...
I think it, yeah, I think, I think that's right. Or it's 18 and 18, maybe it's a total of 36.
Actually, it is.
It's 18 and 18.
Yeah, so outstanding achievement, congratulations to you as a dad.
Yeah.
To have. So hopefully, we can have Adam come once he gets his award to share that with the board.
I'm sure he'd be thrilled.
Great, congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay, seven point zero is the consent agenda. And so if there's something that we would like pulled for discussion from the consent agenda, we can do that. And then we'll have to approve that separately. So Carrie, if you wanted to do that, or if you feel like that your comment wasn't...
Sure, sure. I'll make the comment again, because that's important.
Okay, so you want to pull seven point five.
Put it in the discussion action items.
Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda with pulling seven point five? Please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion. I'm going ahead.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the move of seven point five into the discussion items.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay, and so I'm going to do seven point five right now then. So to approve the resignation of special education teacher.
Do you need a motion before she has discussion?
Yep.
All right, I make the motion to approve the resignation of special education teacher.
Okay. I second it.
All right, so the teacher person, his name is Al Heine. He also taught, actually, majority of his career, he taught science at our school. An outstanding teacher, created great relationships with our students and such. He did come back this year after, I believe it was three years on medical leave. Gave it a good go. Just unfortunately, it wasn't working out for him. He had to take care of himself, and so he's made the determination to resign at this time. But I tell you, our kids benefited from time in front of him as a... I'm not sure if he teaches math, fine as well. I know he taught a lot of physics and chemistry and such.
I think he helped a little bit from time to time, but he was mainly a, you know, he's a physics and chemistry and science guy that was very, very talented.
Yeah, so it's just important to me that we thank him for his service. He was my teacher, he was a big deal to myself and my family growing up. He came to my wedding, and so I know from experience that he has impacted a lot of lives in his career. So it's just important that he's thanked.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. All right, eight point zero, discussion action items. Eight point one, goals report.
So then you'll find that in your agenda here. Under the first goal for our climate, we've got the diversity committee has been meeting, and obviously, we'll be getting updated as well of our other discussion items. But Common Ground Summit scheduled for March 1st, along with the Seeds of Change, which will be for the sawtooth. And then also, due to our weather issue, I know we're going to do some analyst training on a specific day, and Mr. Door is working on rescheduling that, but that is still planned. And our registration process is getting started. Ms. Myers and Mr. Door with our counselor are working close. And then we're setting up for long-term facility planning, so if any of the board members would be interested in that, I'll shoot that out as a date of when we're looking. What that will be is looking future and whether it's going to be our summer projects, so I'll send that out to the board, so if you're available and like to participate. And then our district office relates to the lady in the corner. Ms. Lori is working on our budget revisions. She shot me some updates already today. And looking, at the same time, looking forward to FY '20.
And so as part of that, in March, we're going to be discussing the budget and things. And then I also, you know, because I kind of mentioned it before, that, you know, we met our, you know, financial goal of our fund balance of being, having the percentage in our fund balance that we wanted. And so I just mentioned to Dr. Crandall that I think that it would be good to set some other new financial goals. You know, there's a lot of, you know, we're hearing a lot of positive things from the new governor and things, and so I think that's great news, but I also think it's important to make sure that we think and plan wisely for things and look at, you know, our operating levy expiring and just planning for the future. So as part of that, part of that budget discussions, I also want to have a, you know, maybe set some goals, have some conversation about where we want to go and ideas. We don't necessarily decide in March, but at least start talking about it. So that gives Lori and Dr. Crandall some direction on what the board, you know, wants and sees for the future. But, you know, it's important to start thinking, because you never know. You know, we're at the whim of whoever's in charge, and so we never know exactly.
So I think these are three really great goals. And I certainly agree with you on the financial piece, and I'm thrilled to see what's going on with diversity. I'm just wondering, do we have somewhere certain objectives under these goals or activities planned that we're measuring against? I'm looking at goal two, and I, you know, I mean, I'm new to the game, but the registration process for next spring is starting. I guess I'd like to understand a little bit more how that supports goal number two.
What else we're doing of achievement? So during the registration process, we make sure that the students are on track for graduation. We make sure that they take the courses that would, if, you know, a child comes up and says, hey, I want to be a biologist, right? Then in the registration process, that we're making that alignment.
Do we have other actions or other activities that we're tracking with...
Great questions, but no, we just have more of a general, because this is board level, and so they're more general.
Okay. And it will be time to review these goals again, and I think we normally look at doing that in like August, right? Don't forget we have them for the school year.
Aye, and then you got to publicly say for...
So we'll use this, and then we also have like on our website, we have the world's best workforce, that kind of plan. And so, you know, we kind of, I think we use, you know, that's part of this. You know, that is a guiding factor, and so there's information, but we'll definitely start, because we think that's a great time to start setting new goals, so these will be up for discussion then. Yeah, so we review these every year.
Sure.
And tweak as necessary.
Good, I'll look forward to that.
Good. Any other questions on goals? Eight point two, bond update.
So looking at security technology, we did purchase, updated some of our computers. So we purchased Intel computers in January. Those were primarily to upgrade, some of our teacher computers were heavily used, put that way. The other is that Windows 7 is becoming to the point where they're not going to be supporting, and so these are coming in. They're capable of Windows 10 and beyond, so. With that, on the roofing project, just still paying some bills. Actually, we just, Mr. Nelson and I just received the final drawings. They are going to the construction management firm across Anderson as well, so they can start the ordering process.
What was the, what's the timeframe going to be for that now? I know you told us.
That, that meeting is going to be, or excuse me.
The roof.
The roof is in June.
We're going to...
Start.
We're going to try to do it in two phases. So we'll do the roof in one phase, be done with that, so Sue can do her summer shows, and then when that's done, we'll come in and do the interior stuff like August, mid-August.
Bus garage is a done project. Vehicles, we still have some funds available in there. And then in deferred maintenance, nothing has been updated there. We're obviously looking at the long-term facilities planning. We have some items that we'll be addressing through that. And then furniture, fixtures, and equipment. We had some bills that we paid there, and those you can see are Stormor, for example. That was our, the unit that we had out back. And I'm not, Delco and Perry, Mr. Nelson, do you have any, what those two companies are?
Delco, I think, was all of Jason's stuff in Culinary Yards.
Okay. Yep, and then Perry maybe as well. Because I know we were finishing up getting those, all the... There were a couple odds and ends that he needed to make sure that all the kitchens had everything they needed.
Perry, I think, was signage.
Oh, is that what that is?
We are Perry's signage, yeah.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, I think that was like that. I just looked at the bills and stuff again.
It's Dan's.
Yeah. There was some signage on some doors, some like engraved signs.
Room numbers for science area.
Yeah.
Because all the doors were new up there, and nothing was numbered, so we got that done.
Does it say that it says Pam's building, Jim's building?
Yeah, it's Pam's building, Jim's. There's a banner of Jim's.
And I believe, isn't there something on the outside as you come to the gym?
Blood above the entrance as you walk in, and a large one below, or so.
And then, Science Culinary Arts, no more expenses have been paid since December there. And so that's the update on the bond.
Thank you. So there's like a million dollars left, right, roughly? I did just quick math with you a minute.
I did some, I did some quick math after what, if we pay what's obligated out, plus some other stuff, we've got less than a million left, but we can do some quick math.
Okay. Have we made final payment to...
No.
Okay. Everyone's reading my mind. We now need the final payment on the Culinary Yards space science.
Right.
So there's a few items that are still outstanding that...
It's just very little, little things, and we've been chasing them and chasing them, and they're going to get done.
We won't pay them until they're done.
We're not paying them.
Perfect, perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If they ask, we just say, hey, when it's done, you get paid.
Yeah. Okay, well, learning experience, I guess we'll have to reexamine that relationship for the future, because if this is the way it's going to go, I don't see us wanting to continue that relationship anymore.
Yeah, I can read it, and I had to chat about that too, yes.
Yeah, to put that bull on like, I mean, I think we're done, so. Okay, any other questions on the bond? All right, eight point three is to approve the expenditure revenue report, January 2019.
And prepare action.
Somebody want to make a motion, discuss?
I make a motion to approve, what is it, the expenditure revenue report for January.
Second.
Thank you.
Largely speak to this the best, but if you look at the bottom right corner, we're at 52%, and we're halfway through the year, so.
Yeah, nothing's jumping out as surprising. Revenue's on track, I think, based on what I worked on today. I think the budget changes are going to make that even look better, so.
That's good to hear, not the other way.
Right.
Good.
But everything's on, everything just seems to be on track, and I think we're performing a little bit better over last year even, just... And part of that is, you know, I tend to look at one, three, and five, mostly funds one, three, and five, because that's what makes up our general fund. And a lot of what we're spending money on this year comes out of Fund Six, because we have the bond money, so we're using that for things rather than using the general fund, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question, comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay, eight point four, Common Ground Summit 2019, Senses of Change, Community Day update. And that's from Assistant Principal Door.
Yeah, I've got a couple summaries. I'll start with the Common Ground Summit, which is for our middle school, high school. Megan Rebelke is taking the lead on that. And so what we did last week is we finished up, they did a really nice job of creating a Google survey where all the kids could fill it out. This is what, a description of the different sessions, and then they could kind of rank what classes they wanted to take during the day, what sessions they wanted to attend. And so we finished that up last week. Right now, they're going through all of those and making individual schedule for each kid. So each kid will show up that morning, they'll get an individual schedule, and they'll take them to the rooms that they want to go to. We're also, the committee's also collecting the materials that the presenters will have, so that we have those. And then during parent-teacher conferences, Ms. Myers and myself will both be there to answer questions if any of the parents or community members have questions on the day. So that's really nice. I feel like we've addressed some concerns that we've had in the past, and we're, I think we're just way ahead of where we were before, so it's really nice. And Megan and her team have been incredible, just really organized, so really happy with that. Amanda Hand is taking the reins with Seeds of Change in the elementary. And so just a few highlights of what she gave me. Local writer and storyteller Rose Aerosmith Decou will be facilitating telling our own story workshops with the students, so she'll be on site, and they're pretty excited about that. A master storyteller from the Black Storytellers Alliance in Minneapolis will close the event to all sawtooth students in the ACA. They're doing a lot of fundraising right now, so they've been asking for some donations, and they've gone to the Ed Foundation, so they're working on some fundraising. And then one thing that I thought was a really neat idea is they're going to host a community dinner in conjunction on February 21st, and the purpose is going to be twofold. One, raise some money for the day, and two, just to have some dialogue with the community about, hey, this is why we're doing this, these are the things doing, just kind of to include the community on some real good discussion about the day coming forward. And then another, another nice piece is we're going to have a small group of middle school, high school students who will be joining the elementary kids, and they'll be there to read with them and participate in the day. That's what I have from Amanda and Megan.
Yes, you said fundraising, is there a link on the website where people can donate? They had that last year, I know.
I think there is, but to be honest, I will have to ask Megan and Amanda. I don't know what they have up right now as far as the fundraising piece. I don't know that answer. I can definitely remind them of that, don't ask.
Otherwise, how do people donate?
If people were tuning in and they wanted to donate, they could make a check to Cook County Schools, they could bring it up to the school, they could mail it in to the school, care of Megan Rebelke or Amanda Hand, or they could simply call us at the office, and we'll make sure that we see them in the right direction.
Okay. Great. Any other questions? So the dinner's on February 21st, you said?
Yes.
At what time?
I think right now they're in the, kind of the planning stages. She didn't give me that. It's on the evening, it's in the evening. She said they're going to need some volunteers, but she did not give me the time of that. Amanda has taken that over, and I don't have all the info for you.
I will stay tuned. Great. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You can stay here, because eight point five is the vaping report.
So I guess...
That's show and tell.
Yeah, it's really more than a report, it's just really show and tell. I think we, we talked about it last time, and it's on our radar. I think the one thing I would just want the board to be aware of more than anything, it's very prevalent, I went to the principal's conference in the cities for four days last week. We're all in this thing together, everybody. These schools are in all different places. And one of our goals at the end of the year is to really sit down, look at our discipline policy, and talk about what it is we want to accomplish, what are some goals for this. And moving forward, kind of trying to get on the same page with other schools and trying to be consistent. Right now, we have anything from, the big schools have SROs or Student Resource Officers, and kids get tickets, and then they have to go to classes, and they've got resources for that. Or some schools give an instant five-day suspension. They're out, we're going to set the tone, you're not going to have this in our school. We're kind of in between, following our tobacco, depending upon your first, second, or third. So some, we're just going to want to evaluate at the end of the year and really take a good look at. So I'll just give you a few examples. This is the most common, these are what they call jewels, and they're thin, they look like a flash drive. And you'll see these prominently displayed in every convenience store you go to, because people love them. You know, we're starting to see commercials. If you have listened to the radio or seen any of the television, people are talking about how, well, I've gone smoke-free, and so this is so much better than, for me, than smoking a cigarette. And it's kind of deceptive. What you'll see in these is what you call these pods. And then these pods can be refillable, or lots of them can be with like liquid nicotine. So we have, it's pretty common to, I shouldn't say common, but we've had incidents where we're confiscating this liquid nicotine because students are bringing it, filling these pods, and then selling these pods to their friend or distributing them. This here is 29%. The hard part for us as administrators in the building is you can see smoke when a kid smokes, or you can smell it. This can be odorless, or it can smell like bubble gum.
You can smell it pretty. I mean, we can smell it.
And that gets kids.
Yeah, it's, yeah, you can smell it.
I was going to say, don't spill it.
I...
I'm not going to spill it.
My hands...
But also, what we don't know is, they have these, and these could just be, this could just be full of the scented chemical with no nicotine. Or this could be full of olive oil, or this could have THC in it, and we don't know the difference. And so what we have to do as administrators... in it, and we don't know the difference, and so what we have to do as administrators, we have to follow our tobacco policy and say, this is what it is, we're gonna be consistent, and we're not going to um waver in that. Um I have tried in the last month to really talk to a lot of parents, one-on-one on the phone, especially in a violation and say, do you need any information from me? Um I, after the, my radio interview, I've had over a dozen phone calls from parents thanking us for putting it on the radio, and it's showing me that we need to educate our parents more than ever. We will sometimes find some of these larger ones that are refillable, the electronic, and um they're really not happy when we get those and take those away, because if you look in the stores, none of these things are inexpensive. So if I were to, for instance, buy this with a pack of refillables, I think that would be seventy-five dollars. We did have an instance downtown where somebody went in and bought six hundred and thirty-five dollars worth of this stuff. And so then you kind of know, if you're eighteen years old, do you need six hundred and thirty-five dollars at a time, and then kind of a red flag. But this has definitely happened in our community, and um we're doing the best we can, trying to be consistent. Um but we're just gonna try to bring as much, you know, as much awareness as we can to keep talking about it, and lots of good discussions have happened. Um the clinic and the hospital wanna work with us. We're gonna have a vaping presentation in school that actually Grand Portage initiated for our whole student body, I believe that's the nineteenth of February, and that'll be for all middle school, high school kids. And so we're really gonna try to attack this with education. And um you know, the one thing that doesn't work is, and it's in our policy, and it needs to be for certain situations, but you know, we suspend a kid for everything they do. That's really not the great, it's not the most effective way, the most effective thing to fight this is to get a kid smart about what it is they're doing. And so that's really kind of what we're doing, um obviously if we get third and fourth offenses, and it's affecting other kids and disrupting class, then oftentimes we have to go to those levels, but we're really trying to focus on how can we best educate kids and then have a plan for next year as we start a school year, how can we really start a year off well, we're, we're addressing it right up front and trying to stay in front of the thing. It's not easy, and just, this is a challenge we have, um and I go into the bathroom, it smells like bubble gum and Fruit Loops, and we know that, that's not common, and uh so we have an issue, um just like everybody else does, and we're just trying to, to do the best we can without uh letting it get, let us, let it get us into a rut, you know, so we're you know, overall, I, even since the radio interview, I feel like things are better at school, I don't know, maybe it's just kids know we know now, I don't know.
Maybe they're just getting sneakier.
Uh well, that too, they do like to wear them in their socks now, because when we empty pockets, socks are now the thing, and the, we've had this on the buses. Tom's done a great job giving me the hard drives on the film on the buses, um but the kids are getting smarter. Um but my biggest concern right now with this is simply addiction. What we're seeing is that certain kids can't get through the day. And so if we lock them down and say, no hallways, we're having kids right now just leave class without asking, because they simply can't get through the day without one of these. And um we just need to jump on that before that becomes a bigger issue, so. So not the greatest um
Well.
good news thing, but we're just trying to become more and more aware of what it is that's going on.
Yeah, and I think we need to do that, and I, and I know we have stuff on our website, and you have something in the Viking voice, and um obviously, um Deb's report, you saw that, they're talking about it in Grand Portage, and so just have to keep talking about it and working with the clinic and the hospital, and just educating everybody, adults included, and the kids, and it's just one of the things you have to be talking about. And I mean, just keep at it, I mean, I don't, I don't know what else, I think, I think that's the best thing, just keep talking about it.
Uh we have a new public health, I'm not sure whether exact title is, Rena, you may know, but uh new uh person at the county, is also very much interested in supporting us and working with us to combat this issue as well.
Grace, Grace.
Grace, yeah.
Grace, which are?
No, Grace.
Grin, 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 Grin.
Something, yes.
Yeah, you're right, you're, you're close.
I'm in the, I'm the ballpark.
Yeah, you're close, or something like that, it's Grace.
Yeah, just I, I was with her yesterday, and she shared that she would very much like to, and I, I shared her contact with Mitch, so.
Like Granger, maybe, Grace Granger?
Yeah, it's something along that line, yeah.
We will have a PowerPoint and some stuff also for the, on the Grand Portage community, when we're there for a parent teacher conferences.
Good.
So that'll be up on the screen, so we'll get a little access.
Okay, thank you for taking your time. Do that, thanks. Okay, um eight point six, um to set Grand Portage Community Discussion Dates.
Uh so I've got two dates, and I talked to Maria today, and uh talked to Mitch as well, looking at athletics. April twenty-fifth, which is a Thursday. How does that look for board members? And this would, once again, this would just be a discussion, we're not going up and having a board meeting, we're just gonna go up and have an open forum.
I cannot be there at that date, for sure. Okay, and then where are we doing a data presentation to, or just discussion?
I'll find out, if the LAC, LAC would like us to bring information, we'll, information.
Okay, what's the, what's the other date?
October seventh, which is a Monday, so we're looking at the fall one.
October seventh.
It's actually a Monday. And we looked at that, you know, uh with Mr. Door's ID, he looked, and uh, you know, typically our volleyball events are on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, or not Wednesdays, Tuesdays and Thursdays, so, Fridays, so. Mondays are usually pretty open.
I, I mean, at this point, both of those dates work for me, but
Okay, yeah.
I don't know what the threshold of participation is, that we need a quorum, or try to get everybody, a date for everybody, or is it, are those pretty much the dates?
There's, no, they're not locked in.
Okay.
They're actually going to, we're gonna bring those to the next LIC as well, and make sure that they're okay with that group, but it was just a conversation Maria and I had, started looking at dates, and once again with Mr. Moore, to make sure we didn't have any conflicts with athletics and parents of kids, so.
Sure.
So in thinking of what we wanna accomplish at this meeting, or I shouldn't say meeting, this discussion, when does it make more sense? Does it make more sense, because you know, normally we're up there in the fall. No, we are normally up there in October, I don't know, I'm looking, and this is where I'm looking at.
This is where.
Mr. Door, and so I mean, we're looking, you're the, you're the expert, so what do you think make, does the October date make more sense? Um.
Actually, they um, they do want two dates, they do want a fall and a spring.
Oh, they want two dates?
Yes, yes.
So we would do April and October, I always thought, I thought we were picking one or the other.
I also.
So we actually, we, we went back times that we come up.
Okay, okay.
Excellent.
Now I understand, so let's, April twenty-fifth it is, uh Carrie's not able to be there, but um so we'll pick, that's fine, I, so you guys are open for those dates.
I will report back if something changes at the LIC, if that date has Grand Portage.
Okay, April twenty-fifth, October seventh.
Yes.
And those would be at five? By the clock?
Yes, yep. And most of all, it would be a potluck scenario as well.
And potluck, okay. Okay, sad to miss that.
Like food.
All right, so we'll just get that on our set of calendar dates and have Pam send that to us, okay. All right, that's all we need for that, right, Dr. Crandall?
Yes.
Okay. Um eight point seven is uh to approve the twenty nineteen twenty school calendar.
Do you have the most updated version?
Yep, paper, yep. We have a paper one in front of us, I don't know, is it the most updated version, or is it not?
It is, I think, is that the one you brought, Mitch?
It is.
That's the, that's the one Pam printed out a half hour before we.
It is the one. We just had a few changes that we caught, and
Yep, okay.
Do you want me to talk about a few of the dates as you're looking at this?
I like that. Yes.
Cause they're, they're just, we try to stay as consistent to this year as possible, like when you do any changes to a calendar or anything like that, you, you gotta give it more than one year to really test its merit, so to speak. There are just a couple of changes from this year's calendar. If you look in December and you see Christmas break, Christmas break's always a little different when the twenty-third's on a Monday. What that does is it, it creates a little bit longer break. So you have just a few more days off. Um and so what that did is that, that just gave us a little bit of a challenge of adding a teacher day, so that we have our hundred and eighty-two teacher days scheduled. Um so we had the dilemma of where are we gonna add our additional teacher day, are we gonna add it on, where you see it's added on the calendar right now, on August thirtieth? So we have five days of teacher days before the school year starts, or are we gonna put it in June on the second? And so we showed this to the QOC, Dr. Crandall and I had a discussion, Ms. Myers had a discussion. Obviously, the best thing for kids and for teachers is to do this before the beginning of the year. We find that we're jamming all of these things in the first four days, and then you got that three day break, and then you're and one thing that we wanted to focus on on that, that day is really spending more time with our first, second and third year teachers, getting them ready for a school year and all the logistics, and so really, the biggest change on this calendar right now is simply putting that day on the thirtieth, and not having that free Friday for the teachers. Another change is if you look in October, you see the two box dates for the parent teacher conferences, on the eighth and on the tenth. Okay, so what originally would have happened if we had kept the schedule exactly the same, that, that PE day on the eleventh, that blue bu- blue box for just teachers, that was originally on the fourth. We moved that to the eleventh, so that we could have our teachers talking to parents all week. So on the eighth, they're going to parent teacher conferences, on the tenth, they're going to parent teacher conferences, and then they're going to Grand Portage the next day, that morning, and talking to the Grand Portage community with their kids. And so that kind of keeps teachers and um both communities up to date with grades and where their kids are at, it offers a little more consistency. And we made that little bit of change on the February two thousand twenty as well. We moved the conferences, instead of them being the twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh, we moved them up to the eighteenth and twentieth to simply keep it closer to the Grand Portage date, which is the fourteenth. I know I'm throwing a lot of dates at you. You might ask why we didn't do the Grand Portage date the same, like in October, and it was simply a scheduling thing, where predetermined activities have already been scheduled for next year, and we didn't want parents to have to choose between conferences and an event.
Did you say that the date we'd go to Grand Portage was October seventh, a Monday?
No, the eleventh.
For the, um, no, for the, for the school board for our Grand Portage meeting, I just wondered if that's like a lot in in one week for parents, I don't know.
Well, that is um for the Grand Portage parents who would be booked, and they would do Monday and
Monday and Friday.
Yep. So I'm not sure if that's too much for them or not.
I don't know either, I just, it just occurred to me, it's all in one week?
Yeah, yep. We'll chat at the LIC about that one too.
That might be something to make, as you're discussing that date, point out that the conferences are the same week.
Yep.
But overall, this, this calendar is, is almost identical to this year, those are the only changes. Um and whatever, otherwise they're, this is identical to this year's schedule.
Another, another piece that Mitch and I have been talking, and actually Sissy as well. Um if you look over to the right side underneath that box, it has the if loss of an instructional day occurs ten or more days prior to following dates, school will be held on these days. We're thinking about putting a line underneath that, basically stating that any PDD day can potentially be a winter, a weather makeup day.
What are our required days for school?
The state legislature has, uh we need to have a hundred and sixty-five student days.
Okay, so we're asking exactly what is required.
So if we miss a day, we have to make it up.
Yep, there's no wiggle room.
Okay.
Yep. We meet the number of hours, I don't know if you followed, the, the governor said, hey, I pardoned everybody for a number of hours. Didn't say anything about the days, so we still need to make up everything. Yep.
And, yeah, go ahead, yeah.
I was just going back to your block about if loss of instructional day occurs ten or more days prior to the following dates, will be held on these days, what is, I'm sorry, I'm not tracking with that really well.
So we're, what we're trying to do is just set a priority, so if we lose a school day, so
A snow day.
Snow day, April tenth is gonna be the first one that we're gonna take from a PDD day, teachers only, and we're gonna make it a student day. We're kind of prioritizing upfront, so parents kind of have an idea. Like if that happens, this is kind of the priority that we're gonna use.
Gotcha, okay, so if the snow day, for example, happens ten days prior to April tenth, then April tenth will be the makeup day.
Correct.
But if we have a snow day April ninth.
It'll be May twenty-second.
Correct.
But say for example, uh we, uh last week was snow the first week of March, and we missed three days in a row, we're gonna use all three makeup days following then.
And could, and I just compared it to this year, because this year on the calendar, thank goodness, we have like four or five days on there, and, and we're using them all, basically, we're almost using all of them. And so I was just, my comment was with only having three days listed, are people gonna think, oh, okay, well, we only have to make up three, even if we miss four, we're only gonna have to make up three, and so you know, and I know, and I know we can have school on those PDD, PDD days, but I just so staff are aware and parents are aware, we can use any of those dates to make that a student day also, um just, just so people know, because I just don't want somebody saying, you never said that, what, what do you mean? What do you mean you're gonna change this PDD day to a student day, and so.
So we're gonna put some verbiage in there, just so everyone is aware, that the PDD day could become a makeup day, instructional day.
Just so everyone knows.
And from the teacher contract perspective, I haven't read the contract in a while, I know we worked on that last spring.
Yeah.
But it's been a while, um is there any issue with taking those professional development days and, or calling, are we
No, well.
a snow day becomes an unplanned professional development day, or what's our, what is your reaction, and is that all?
That, that's gonna be a discussion with the, during our negotiations, because right now in our contract with the teachers, it says that if, if we close school due to weather, they do not need to report. Either way, they still need to make it up. That's what their contract says, a hundred and eighty-two days, they still need to work a hundred and eighty-two days.
But a teacher that lives in Hovland or Grand Portage, or up the Sawville Trail would have the choice of saying, you know what, I'm not coming in for this terrible weather day, because I'm doing it in June, or something.
It could be the, it could be the teacher who lives across the street, that, all that option.
Yeah. Everyone has options, but it's
We're also, and we, we're gonna have a discussion about, you know, giving them the option also to come in.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, because we don't need to pick where you live, so that we can't dictate where people live, and so there's responsibilities to be taken, I'm sure.
And I think the discussion that, I know, um Dr. Crandall sent me the sheet, and it was the discussion at the conference, because every, it's both dealing
Oh, everyone's dealing with it.
Everybody was out.
Yeah, yep.
Is um lots of schools in the cities have moved to E-days.
Yes.
So kids get on their devices at home, they log in, every teacher at those schools is um mandated to put two or three hours of materials on, and they're, they're there, they have like a two or three hour window, where they're there to answer questions online with their kids. And so it's just something that we can explore. And there's alternative plans for the household that doesn't have wifi, and um there's a system in place, and it's just something that we'll get to explore, because if we don't put in all the PD days, like Dr. Crandall said, and they, and our teachers don't report, it means all of a sudden at the end, on that June two thousand twenty, you have teachers there, June first, second, third, fourth and fifth, and there's no kids. And it's, it's not the greatest way to fulfill a contractual obligation, it's just not the and so looking at all that and having that discussion will help a lot.
Yep. Thank you.
Is the, is there anything that mandates the last day of school being, I mean, is that ever flexible? You know, we're talking Is the, is there anything that mandates the last day of school being, I mean, is that ever flexible, you know, we're talking about.
I think it still can go anywhere, yes.
So, if you needed to have some hard teacher days, you could bump the school year out another week or something?
We could.
Correct.
We could, it would be highly unpopular.
Be wildly unpopular.
Wildly unpopular, and probably not very productive.
Yeah, sure, I know, I'm just trying to understand.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, we did, when I was a student here, we went in like first or second week of June or something like that, and we have had longer school years in the past.
Absolutely.
I think we also had a winter, like more winter break though at the time, too.
I mean, are there places, people, things that just like build in the wiggle room and say, you know, this is the reality of where we live, we're likely gonna have these days, so, we're just gonna preemptively up the numbers by five days or something, and then.
There's, I've looked at all kinds of different schedules, not necessarily for that reason, but there are schools starting in like August fifth. This community with how we're built at this moment in time would not, it would not be receptive, um, but lots of schools have built in a few more breaks and have started earlier. That seems to be kind of a little bit of a trend, but I don't know if it would work here.
You guys were speaking at the same time, I didn't hear what Dr. Crandall said, it wouldn't work because of?
Oh, uh, resorts. A lot of our students, our older students work at a lot of the resorts.
It's gotta be a lot of community pressure.
And, and our stuff.
Yeah, actually, yes.
And our stuff.
Um, just from another perspective as you're looking at this, the one reason why I really pushed to ask Dr. Crandall to have the calendar on, on this meeting, is because we will have a new counselor, um, we will have, well, actually, we'll have, have two new people working on the registration process with myself, and I've only done it once before. And so we will go down to, um, get campus training for the registration process, how to put all the schedules together, we can't do that um, until the calendar's actually approved, so, cause they plug in all the dates and you go through and you do your quarters, and you, and so, that's why we're, we're bringing it to you today, because, um, once we do that, I can get the green light to get them the training, we need to get a registration process going.
So we're bringing this to the board for, uh, as a recommendation for approval.
Okay. Is there any reason why we shouldn't approve it today?
No, no, there isn't any reason, um, you know, our, because we are the resident district, you know, what we do impacts, uh, like G E S is waiting for our approval. You know, we share a blessing with G E S, and so, they, they're, they're very wanting to see what this is, so, for everybody involved, for, um, I, it just makes sense to get this done and get this set for everybody.
Considering it impacts them because of the cooperation we have, I mean, did they provide input in this process, or did they care?
We, we did send Pete James a copy of the tentative, but the only change that we did was move where our conferences were, so, he does have it, he didn't get back to myself, I don't, Mr. Door, did he?
No, no, I didn't.
I wonder, um, if it might be a good idea though to, as, um, Dan was saying, maybe add like February fourteenth and March twentieth, or something like that to our list of if a loss of instructional days occurs, just so that.
As verbiage.
More forthcoming for parents and.
What we'll do is, below the three dates, we'll put a note saying, understand that we can use any of the P D D days for makeup days, cause we will make up all school.
Cause pretty much any P D D day after Christmas make, it makes sense to be prepared, could be a.
Well, could we know that more for us? We never know.
Two thousand thirteen, we had three days in December.
Yeah. Alright, well, I do need a motion to, um, approve the calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, calendar for the twenty nineteen twenty twenty school year, as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, okay, uh, nine point zero administrative reports, uh, nine point one prin, principals report, highlight, um, and so, Mrs. Myers is at the principals' conference, I don't know what the.
Yeah, she's at, um, Pelzbar, you know, the elementary, elementary chief principals.
There you go, and Mr. Door went to the, the high school, middle school, high school.
M A S B, yep.
There you go, so, okay, go ahead, Mitch.
Um, so, one thing that, um, Ms. Myers wanted to highlight was I love to read month, that's happening in the elementary, and we got kind of a neat thing where we're emphasizing reading throughout the day, and so, kids at all times have books on them, and it's been nice, cause I've got to do this instead of Ms. Myers this week, but I get on the loudspeaker and say, hey, it's time to drop everything and read, and the kids, wherever they are, doesn't matter where they are, they stop, and they read, and we do it for five, seven minutes, and I, you know, I'm kind of built for middle school, high school, and so I didn't really realize how big a deal this was, so I did it the other day, and you could hear cheering from down in the elementary, these kids, yeah, they're all running around getting their books, and I was like, I didn't realize, like, they're into it, so these kids are reading like crazy right now in the elementary, um, it's been a, it's been a great week for me to go down and see how mo, how invested they are in the, in the month, so it's been great. Really, on, on our front, in the middle school, high school is, I'm just amazed at the flexibility of the teachers with the days off. It's like one day, two days, three days, and we had lots of our retreats planned through Youth Frontiers, and, um, so we had those days geared up, those are some, uh, it takes quite a bit of time for Anasans from to plan those things, and we were fortunate enough to work with Youth Frontiers, they have a really good relationship with them, we've got all of those retreats rescheduled, we're really lucky, the blessing in disguise was, now there's a new grant that I have an opportunity to get to help offset the cost for those retreats, and that's not due until, um, April, and so now I, it bought me two months to actually seek additional funds for this, or to offset the generous, uh, support that the McFarlands did, so, really happy with the staff and how accommodating they've been, and, um, you know, we're just rescheduling things, and um, we have robotics going on right now, one act play, Alpine ski, Nordic ski, and the basketball team, we have a student body that is very, very busy right now at this time of year, so, um, our student, our, our students are heavily involved, so it's been, it's been a good month for us.
Great, thank you. Alright, nine point two superintendent report.
I did get a chance, and I pretended we were having a, the joint powers meeting, which would be our board, the, uh, county board, Grand Portage representation, and the city of Grand Ray, along with the hospital, and we are hosting the next meeting, and that is going to be February twenty eighth. I'll make sure that that gets sent out by Pam, all board members as well, uh, it may be in this room, J M C C, but I'm not sure it's gonna be large enough for all those uh, folks to sit around one spot, so we may be looking for a different venue regarding that, but that's probably the big thing coming up, the end of the month. Uh, Mitch mentioned the one act play, our, our kids did an outstanding job, I'm not, are they gonna be redoing it, Mitch, or, or school, or that ever been done?
They did it, they did it before the competition, actually.
They, they did just an outstanding job, was very, very well done, nice to see the talent being displayed. Uh, and if you read Ms. Rogers' report, uh, she and I were able to attend the M S B A conference, and some great uh, opportunities came out of that, but I, I've already shared some of that with Mr. Door, Ms. Myers as well. Um, one of the things that we have had some difficulty with this year, we lost our physical therapy and occupational therapy services, but we just in, within the last two weeks have found, uh, P T services and O T services, we're in negotiations with the O T, the P T has already signed up, we just have to get that all scheduled down. So that's really great to meet some of the needs of our kids, and we held our first community ed advisory meeting in January, I'm still looking for members in the community, and I continue to look for ideas for programings and courses to offer, uh, for our community, that. And the rest, you can take a look at the report that I provided.
What time did you say the joint powers meeting was supposed to be?
I believe that is, I'll, I'll let you know, but I believe it's a six o'clock meeting.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, so make sure, cause that, that'll be here, it's a three weeks away, so, February twenty eighth, sixth, yeah, it'll be here at the school, yeah, some.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we posed for it because likely there's a quorum from each entity, so let's post it, public meetings, everybody can post. Great, any questions for Dr. Crandall?
Just, just one, um, I see that you received, um, a draft from the Playhouse, the contract?
Yes, so I'm gonna be connecting, I couldn't recall which one of our board members was the.
I'm trying to think, I think it's me, so, I was wondering if I could get a copy of it.
Yes, it's written out.
I will, we'll get you a copy of it then, yeah, I'm not sure if it's sitting in my bag right over here, or if I left it up at that, but I'll, I'll verify, and if it's up there, then Pam will be able to get her hands on it and get a copy for you, if not, I can scan it and send it to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we'll set up a meeting, uh, with them. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, for, I don't know, maybe this is a question for other folks, but I was curious, uh, what's going on with the student representative on the school board?
I was curious, too.
I actually spaced that out, I should've put in my highlights, sorry, I gave that to, um, Ms. Rebelski, Ms. Rebelski presented that to um, our student government, and right now, they are recruiting applicants, and so, um, I, I would love to say that I would have some within two or three weeks, I have to touch base with Ms. Rebelski and ask her if that's realistic, cause what would be ideal is that we could come into March with somebody and say, we have, we have a, a student rep for the March meeting. That, that's the goal.
Sure, okay, yeah, I mean, I think the sooner the better, just because whoever it ends up being is already not getting a full year, you know, the more time that goes on, it kind of messes up that schedule, so.
Yes.
Oh, another, another piece, uh, Ms. Jensen communicated with me, and, and I include Mr. Door, uh, something that the board had asked for were A C T scores, A P, A P test results, um, how many credits are earned, and as Mr. Door started delving into that, he discovered it wasn't as, quite as easy as just, oh, here it is, and so we're deciphering through that, but we'll have that at our March meeting as well.
Dan Shirley and I had had a discussion that maybe this would just be a nice thing to add as an ongoing thing to the agenda, is just updates on action items, things like that, um, could just be a running, like, this is why we're not doing this yet, or whatnot, cause every once in a while, something like that isn't being done, and it's like, oh, did it go off the radar, or, you know, and it's just nice to, it's just nice to hear and know what's going on, rather than wonder if something got lost in translation, or, you know, maybe that could be in kind of a ongoing like response to action items or something in our.
Alright, thank you, yeah, so I got that, I have that down.
It was in our, our, our session from last time or something.
Makes sense, makes sense.
Yeah, and we could, I mean, it would, you know, it just, it would be just an organizational thing that would just help everybody kind of keep some of the stuff on top of mind, you know, and we could even have somebody, you know, we could talk more about this later, but, you know, a couple of my ideas were, you know, have somebody designated as taking the action items down, you know, at the meeting, somebody we would designate, board member perhaps, and then, we just say, okay, that's an action item, okay, we got it, who's responsible for that? And when are we gonna have, you know, some sort of time bound aspect, whether we're gonna have it by the next meeting, or in a couple of weeks, or whatever? And then, at the beginning of a meeting perhaps, we just say, alright, let's do a recap on last month's action items, you know?
Which is a long business.
Where we have this, this, that and that, and, you know, it just kind of would maybe, perhaps that would help us keep track of that stuff, we could create a spreadsheet or something with them on there, and sure, but.
Fantastic idea, it's a great idea, so let's start doing that, and, yeah, it's a great idea, great suggestion. Okay, is there anything else? Otherwise, we can, um, adjourn, is there anything else? Or is any motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
So, okay. Okay, so, um, to adjourn at six oh five P M, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, great, thank you, thanks for coming, see you, Bill.
Yeah, can I say everybody?
Yeah, yeah, see ya.
Back to you at four.
Back to you at four A M.
On my alarm.
I will see, it's still snowing out there, I see, so.
I can hear the rain.
Alright.
Thanks.
Okay.
What's going on at four A M?
That's where I'm at, highway department.
Yeah.
Oh, that's where more A M meeting is, it's like a.
Like, yeah, I haven't had it yet, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
There, you're talking to like the clouds.
Yeah, a lot of them come in from high school, so.
And they're just kind of giving you an update on the status.
Yeah, at least have the recording, thank you.
He's got some Hovland and Top Gear, so, we can kind of get.
I think, um, I think if I tell this to you.
Sure.
In, in town.
Make sure we do that.
So it's very hard to get the logins. So it's been a long.